That.
Like.
I will say it. I'm glad it's warmer up here than it is downstairs, I will say that.
It's light as no fire, yes. You ever worked in a TV station, it's. Oh, it's warm horrors.
Yeah. That's what it is. That's what it is.
All right. Seven o'clock it is, so all the meetings order and ask the town clerk to call the rules.
Alex.
Here.
Ian Briscoe.
Here.
Bill Heisen.
Here.
Eddie Payne.
Yes.
Walter Townsend.
Yeah.
Roger Whitley.
Here.
My is present, that's great, let's stay and have our pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. To the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. So, uh, clerk has informed me that there's a change to the, uh, after the approval of the agenda. Uh, item two B. And it needs to be changed, would you like to explain that to us?
Um, Javier and I had a little miscommunication on dates. So August nineteenth needs to be struck out, October twenty twenty first is in your packet. January thirteenth needs to be struck out. And November fourth is added to your packet.
Great. All right, so with those couple of changes in mind. Did you have something you needed to add?
Well, yeah, I wanted to add about the committees.
Yeah.
The discussing of, at least to start discussing about committees, liaisons and any, any new ones you might consider.
And then I included in the packet the approved committee charter, which I've already shown Mr. Counselor also before the meetings.
You know, I think this was a draft, because, uh, this is a, I think we didn't approve this. February twenty four, that was last year, no, I think we approved it last fall or last summer. So this was a draft, because we didn't, the one I sent was the official one, I think. It didn't have, it had a liaison at the end of it, on the website, the one I said I think was more active, was the one that we approved.
That's the one I had a copy.
Yeah, this is an old one, but anyway, it's very similar, so.
Um, the committee name assignments are still correct on it, or from last year, so it's useful in that way.
Yeah, but I just want to say, it might have been changed a little bit, how it was set up, but I think it's basically the same.
Okay, so do we want to add that as item D?
Yeah, sure, yeah, yeah, the committee charges.
Okay. Does anyone have a problem adding item D, the, uh, talk about committees and assignments? Which we'll get to later on, I had planned to talk about that anyhow. So, is there motion to approve the agenda?
Uh, I move that we approve the agenda as mentioned by our counselor and our clerk.
Okay, is there any, in a second, any discussions? All in favor?
Hi.
Good. Public forum, um, I know we have a couple of people in the audience, Mr. Carr has asked if he could speak for a few minutes, so I'll invite Mr. Carr to come forward.
I'll get it, Tony, um, I didn't know it was eleven through superintendent. Uh, levy was built primarily in nineteen eighty six, dedicated in nineteen eighty seven, so it's coming up on thirty nine years old. Uh, and we haven't done any major significant repairs. Um, so the Corps over the last three to five inspections have been noting about the concrete, both at the pump house and the levy wall between Berry's and uh, West River Road is needing sealing and some minor repairs. So I'm working with Javier, uh, I've gotten bids, um, from a reputable contractor to do it in two parts. Uh, the first part will take care of the pump house, uh, he would make all the necessary repairs and seal it. And I'll let Javier go into the financial end of it, but basically we'd be using any predicted surplus from this budget year uh, to cover that expense, and then budget next year for the Berry Street, the West River Road section, uh, to get it all done. But I'd like you to consider that, Javier, will you explain the financial side?
Yeah, so, one thought I had was coming back to town once on February and looking at if there's a possible reappropriation for this year to cover two thirds of the, of the needs for the levy, um, I know that when we began this year, we talked about holding large surplus for, well, urgent needs like this, unexpected needs, uh, so this year when we were with Army Corps of Engineers, that became a priority once they did their review. Uh, the interest in seeing if it would be possible, and if our budget is on track to be able to accept surplus, is that we would avoid using that LGID fund? Or, um, look at other revenue sources to try to address this, and then try to at least spread it out over two fiscal years. Um, you know, we won't have the same capital projects like a generator project, or some of the farmers, which can now be some new farmers market work? And maybe we can shift those typical revenue that we have and just prioritize, uh, levy work um, for next year also, um, I, what I might recommend is using February as an opportunity for me to work on the numbers? And then see if I can present something at first blush to you guys, and then see, um, what kind of priorities you want to and how you want to approach it, but, uh, more or less is let me work the numbers and then see if I can give you some good information to make a decision on this. Uh, yeah.
Do we have a ballpark on that, or either of you?
Yeah, the, uh, first part, the pump house is roughly thirty three thousand. And the levy wall from Berry, uh, Western Road is fifty one thousand. And we divided that. The levy wall is a little bit more important. But financially, it worked better doing the pump house first, and the levy wall in the next budget year.
One of the things I would say, Mr. Carr, first of all, thank you for bringing it to our attention, and I would, I'm going to say this to the town counselors and to the town. Every once in a while, every year or two, I say something like this, but I think the most important thing we have to do is the levy. So beyond anything else, we have no town if the levy doesn't hold up to a flood, and so the responsibility, I think, and I'm, I'm not the only one who feels this way, but the issue of making sure that we follow through on that has a lot of ramifications, both for anyone who lives behind the levy, but also it has to do with insurance for people, it has to do with the flood planning, it has to do with just many, many different things, so your job, could you take one minute and just explain how long you've been doing it, just, just so everybody, the, the town understands?
I, I've been superintendent since nineteen ninety eight now. So, I mean, the big thing is, the Corps, since Katrina happened, the Corps has two grades, pass and fail. If we fail, they wipe their hands clean, the town assumes full responsibility, the Corps has nothing to do with it. We stay on good graces and stay on pass because of your support in the upkeep of the levy. And this is one of those projects, um, that needs to be addressed sooner than later. Um, so that we stay in good graces with the Corps and maintain that passing grade.
And you, this is a two-year period, Kevin. Have they given us a deadline?
No.
For the project, it's just the next time they show up.
Next time they show up, they could fail.
Yeah.
Which right now isn't scheduled until twenty six. But they could come in here tomorrow. I mean, they don't have to announce it, they can just show up.
And you said you've told one contractor, you got one bid.
Well, I've talked to two contractors, the first person I called, the first company I called, didn't want to do it. So there, there was a no bid, and the second one, they, they took it on against its prices.
I guess.
Because it is a pretty daunting task.
I think we're still going to get through it.
Yeah, and that might be the successful one.
How much life is this going to give, those two spots?
Do you remember? I don't, I don't know that off the top of my head.
How much additional time is going to add to those degraded, you know, parts of the levy?
I don't.
Is this going to be fifty, thirty thousand dollars, and it gets us another four years or five years out of the, before we have to do something else?
I, I have the email, I'll stay here and look it up and find it, I don't know that off the top of my head.
I was just curious about the, the, that we're doing the budget, is there any issues with the, the Main Creek reservoir dam? Okay, that's good.
No, it had an inspection, uh, was that in September, I believe, October?
Yeah. This fall.
And, uh, the things that they noted were very minor, that, uh, between Jam and myself.
Right, because they were done about the same time, in connection with each other, weren't they?
Uh, I call them. The, the dam is done by Hurt and Profit. The Corps, that is not a Corps project, although they do walk up there and look at it, because it directly impacts it.
Oh, I see.
Um, but they don't inspect it by their own tracks.
And then they report out to the state agency that does dams.
Yeah, okay.
You said two project, one could act levy itself, and the other one could, what needs to be done to that core? Levy, you said needs to be sealed or what?
Yeah, it, both of them have to be cleaned and sealed. Uh, with the wall in between each section, if you go down there and look, the wall's kind of V in like this, and there's a gasket between them to allow for expansion. And a lot of that gasket has failed. Uh, so all that gas will be cleaned out, replaced, uh, prior to be sealed.
So no activation needs to be done?
No.
Okay.
There were no.
Everything be done completely?
Yeah.
I do.
Yep, absolutely. And the same goes for the pump house. Uh, the pump house, you can see on the face where the, um, the concrete is starting to, uh, fall, crack and break off, and they'll fix all that and seal it back.
This is an issue, though, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mayor or Javier, at times the county can help us with something like this, is that not correct?
They give an annual stipend in support of, uh, of the town levy system, it's right now around twenty one thousand. That covers a majority of operations on it, um, I don't know if we've had history, but that's been a longstanding agreement, at least that, that, uh, percentage they give to the town in support of the levy.
One thing we might want to do then with this situation is, is alert our supervisor to this information and see what else the county can do to help with it, because that stipend they give us covers, that's good, but this is above that, so to speak, this is, this is a different situation, and I think it'd be good for us to maybe be a little more aggressive in how we lobby them, uh, would you think, Mr. Carr, that might help?
Sure.
The worst case scenario, they say.
That might be a good, uh, issue for that meeting in May with them.
Elmo County used to give us seventeen, now they give us twenty one.
Yes, they, they index it against, uh.
Seventeen for a long time. Yeah, yeah, that's what I remember. I was hoping this twenty one would be in addition to that, but it never worked out there. It hasn't matched inflation.
Oh, no.
They, they use an index, but it isn't, I would like it to be more, uh, and a more aggressive index in our favor, but, um, it's a little bit more.
Is it based off of property value, or is it?
Based off, I think, a consumer good index, is what they use, I can't remember, I pulled the agreement, uh, last fall, looking into investigating it. And so it just kind of creeps up over the years slightly, you'll see it in our budget, uh, for the same way.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Carr?
Okay, and I'll get back to you momentarily.
Thank you, Tim, appreciate all you do.
Is it, uh, twenty one thousand, that definitely earmarked for the levy, or is that just for the general use of the town?
No, it's, it's, town has an agreement on file with the county, we sign it, or I sign every, the town administrator signs, signs every year an agreement to continue it, and it's just specified, it's, it's in relation to the levy maintenance.
In relation to?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, it would apply to this, or just our general, uh, expenses that we have, which is usually about thirty eight thousand a year for levy, uh, payments, yeah.
Do you recall, Javier, when that's renewed?
Um, that was part of my curiosity, it's just been rolling over, I don't know if it'd be worthwhile for the town to have a conversation again about it.
Um, I think absolutely, I, wouldn't you all agree that I think it makes sense that we, as a town, talk to them? I mean, that, that's a part, they're our partner, so we want to talk to, I mean, I would say definitely, we would, at least I would want to talk to them, have more, them aware of this need. Yeah.
I might point out, as, as been said by other council members at annual meeting, um, I think years ago, it pretty much covered our operation budget every year, um, but that slowly increased as costs increased. Even with somebody really volun, practically volunteering their time, cost to maintain that levy.
When's the joint meeting with Elmo County, May?
I don't know the exact date, but it'd be May, so we have enough time to kind of have a conversation with them.
Probably two.
Yeah.
So you have ways, if it don't help us, we can go fuss up.
Yeah.
Okay, right. Uh, get back to your question there, uh, the bid that they put in, uh, does not address how long it's valid for, so I'll have to get that information to come back in February. Uh, it all talks about is the products which the Corps has already approved they can use. But yeah, I'll have to find out. What, as may it like.
I appreciate it.
Uh, just one more thing. Since. Um, I don't know what type of, uh, I don't know exactly what was in the federal infrastructure bill passed by the last administration, but uh, I recollect only eleven percent of it was toward actual infrastructure, with this coming, is that something we could apply for? Um, I don't know, you know, money is, they may have infrastructure.
To me, right now, I'm not sure, but I could look into it and look back with town council, I think that's a good idea to investigate. Uh, that is a possibility.
Supposedly it's for deteriorating infrastructure, repair replacements, so.
Especially a federal, our previous federal project.
Exactly.
And. Any other questions? Any other members of the audience that would like to speak for the council, yes, come forward. State your name.
Well, hey, my name is Elizabeth Butler, that some of you know me in the past, um, as Elizabeth Schoenborn of Ravensford Studios. And a longtime volunteer and supporter of this lovely little town of Scottsville that I've loved since I moved here in two thousand nine. I've spent so many years volunteering, I know a lot of faces here. Um, I was also on the Board of Directors for SCAN, Scottsville Center for Arts and Nature, working very closely with Nancy, Nancy Gill. And actually, she is the one, when I was unfortunately going through a horrific divorce and abusive situation. Um, and I am now Elizabeth Butler, no longer Elizabeth Schoenborn, forever back to my birth name, thank you very much. But since I have lived in the old tavern building at three sixty East Main Street, just a couple of blocks of here, I would have walked, but it was a little too chilly. It's one of the most historic buildings in Scottsville, literally from the late seventeen hundreds. It is basically, it was a tavern, it's when the bateaus would come in with their goods and services, trying to open up the west. I was also the festival coordinator for the bateau when it came in on that Wednesday after Father's Day. So many, so many things, and I truly love this, and now I'm asking for your help. Chief Jenkins requested strongly that I appear for you tonight, I don't get out very much, I am recovering from a severe injury, so pardon my little gaps and, and having referred to some notes here. So, twenty eighteen, when I moved into the tavern building. Perfect. All of my antiques, my lifelong legacy of multiple generations, it's my pride and joy. And, and it's, it's worth some monies, I take care of it, I don't want to risk it. However, next door, I've been living with a circumstance that has become totally intolerable. I'm talking about three ninety East Main Street, property that suffered a fire, burned out, and yet now Ginger Nancy, or Marshall, whatever her relationship is, um, that's another old ordeal. So she's been living there, no heat, no electricity, no running water, she initially was stealing my water and plugging in an extension cord to my electricity. My landladies have kindly already taken care of that, have put up security grading on my back glass door, I was fearful for her literally breaking in and assaulting me, she's verbally assaulted me so many times, I've lost count. Numerous vehicles that roll up and down the driveway, again, Chief Jenkins can attest to that. Drug dealing, rampant, rampant drug dealing. Kiara, Ginger's daughter, is now in rehab for her terrible addiction, and her two children have been taken away by Child Protective Services. They've been living in a junk pile that I see every day I walk out my door. Piles, it's been there since before I moved in, who knows how long, and then after the fire, more junk came. And now she's living there, and she's burning that same trash in the one working chimney. I don't even want to think about the toxic nature of what's coming out of that, that is right next door to me, literally six feet away. At first, I felt sorry for her when I moved in, I gave her hundreds and hundreds of dollars in cash. I gave her food, I gave her furniture, I gave her clothing. I'm a good and kind person, I am known as a good cheer lady, I am branded as that, that is me, that is my business. I am a detail-oriented person, I'm a college-educated person, I have degrees in marketing as well as English. I'm sure that right here, our mayor can also tell you a little bit about me, as well as Alex, who knows me, I know, I know you, Dan, I mean, I've been here a long time, I've done a lot for the town, so what I'm asking for is on behalf of me, as well as Chief Jenkins, can we arrange some kind of town funds to get a dumpster parked on the street? Get an army of volunteers and take the garbage away, it's a health hazard. I've called literally the EPA, the local chapter, they did come on site, they took soil samples. There, there is an issue there that is a, it is a health concern, not only an eyesore. And I've been living with it, and I'm about at the end of my rope, and I respectfully ask for any assistance or guidance. Thank you, if you have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer.
We, uh, we understand your situation, um, somewhat, the chief gave us a detailed report.
He appeared at the work council session.
And we are, we are collectively working on some sort of solution, uh, uh, chief, you were wanting to chime in?
Good to marry council, thank you, Ms. Butler, thank you for coming this evening.
So much, I didn't even know that you were in office, I saw, I saw you in the parking lot.
Yeah, I have known Elizabeth since she moved here, and, uh, she was very active in SCAN, uh, did a lot of voting at the town and a lot of events, and, uh,
The Bateau Festival.
Did all kinds of things.
Damn it on the chains.
Up into the town, so, my thoughts are, if we can figure out a way to help her out of that situation, is something we ought to do.
Well, I think we have a solution, since the last time, so Ms. Butler called me and responded over to her house, she was very upset about the, the living conditions next door. She had a, a number of concerns, um, a lot of which I was able to, uh, find answers to. She felt that the house was condemned, the house is not condemned. Uh, the fire marshals have been contacted by, have been contacted by our fire chief at the home, but was not condemned. Um, I made a visit to the home, she's not burning trash, it stacked up around the house, she's bringing coals from firewood outside, putting them in the driveway, and she was cooking, uh, I think it was bacon and something else with coals.
With coals outside, and I think it was skill.
Things, things that I was able to determine that were not illegal, or in violation of the town's ordinances. So the next step was to come to you all, I encourage her to come to council and talk to council about her concerns with the living conditions next door. Since my visit with you all last Monday, Javier and I have actually been working together, uh, along with, uh, Jack and his team of volunteers. I made a phone call to one of the, uh, property owners, property owner is going to be bringing his large trailer down there to the location. Uh, staged it a day or two before, uh, the, uh, January the twenty eighth date, which we have already scheduled and planned with a number of volunteers, I believe our town maintenance person may come down and assist with some of the collections, she's already started segregating the different piles of the stuff that's going to be taken out of there, uh, off the property, uh, so we can readily get it out, loaded it up. Uh, the owner of the property, uh, it's gonna, once we get the trailer full, he's gonna haul it off, and it'll be done with, I'm hoping that one trailer will do, uh, I think it's an eight by sixteen trailer that he's bringing down. Um, but he's willing to, uh, bring his resource down and willing to take the garbage off of the property at no expense to the town. Uh, just thankfully, our volunteers will, uh, come down and the town's, uh, maintenance person will come down and help with the cleanup of around the property, she's been made aware, landowner's been made aware, so we're just waiting on the January twenty eighth date in the morning. Hopefully get it cleaned up.
What action would you like to see your time answer?
Right now, uh, Mr. Bassett, I think we have it, I, I think, uh, at last Monday's meeting, you know, we were thinking of different ideas, and, and one of the ideas that we had proposed to council was possibly council helping fund a dumpster down there that we might be able to leave in front of the home to help fill up the trash and take it out of there, we, Javier had a, an arrangement made with a collection site, four hundred dollars. Um, but since then, we've been working with the owner and the person that's living there, and I think we have a plan to get it cleaned up, that it won't cost the town anything, so I just wanted to make sure town was aware, town council was aware, that, uh, we do have a plan that I'm hopeful that will work, uh, but we'll see.
I have a question for you, um, the tenant that's living there now is not the property owner?
Well, depends on who you talk to.
Exactly.
Well, what I, what I'm getting at, if the tenant is not the property owner, if, if, uh, if it's all made to clean up. Maybe if you future reference to how to actually enter historic distance, which is like right down the street from our museum, right there. Let them know that if it gets cleaned up from here on out, it'd be, and if the town has to go back and do that, it'd be fine of some sort.
I think we talked about that with Mr. Bowling, with, uh, our work session, and I think that there's a legal process that essentially our administrator may have to go through to get that accomplished.
Essentially, to find out, uh, what the tenant is, is not the property owner.
Again, and I don't mean to beat decisions at all, it really depends on who you're talking to, she, the person that's living there will say it's family property, and she has just as much right to it as, uh, Kevin Marshall, one of the owners. Um, I think the, the, the deeds and property are in dispute between the family. Um, my perspective is it's a family property, Kevin and her, she has just as much right to be there as he does. I think it's life rights for the property, if I'm not mistaken.
That's a legacy property, I think it's what they father and go, includes adjacent lot.
So Kevin owns it, but I think Ginger and the granddaughter have a life rights to the property. But I think Ginger and the granddaughter have a life rights to the property. So it makes it a little murky to be able to deal with it. So.
So what I would uh. Ask you is if, if this is get scheduled in a time and can you just let us all know the time and date? And uh, if any of us available, I'm sure we'd be happy to go down and try to pitch in.
It's already scheduled, uh, January the twenty eighth at nine o'clock in the morning.
Rain day is Tuesday, right?
Rain day is uh, the next day, the twenty ninth.
I've got the ten o'clock thing in Green County on that date, but uh, so I'll see what's going on when I get back.
But I think uh, Jack has got some volunteers. Come down and I think we have a solution to it.
Okay, let's try it anyhow.
I understand that this has been cleaned, the property's been cleaned up once before and it's back in this condition once again. Javier and I've talked, I think if. If the town goes to this extent and puts these resources in this. You know, I think we need to move forward with some kind of a, a punitive action the next time. The police, we have gotten, you know, all of the. Drug activity out of the area down there as at this point. Uh, cars are not coming up and down. Uh, the person that's living there uh, seems to be um. Cleaning her act up, uh, seems to be uh, off. Drugs for now. Um, one of the other persons is in rehab, not back yet. So we'll have to see once they get all moved back in there and see what happens again.
Were they, were they responsible for this accumulation of trash or was it because of the fire or both?
Mr. Payne, that's a great question, but I will tell you in talking with Jimmy Marshall. Uh, him and Kevin have gone to that property and attempted to clean up inside and I think that. The two that were inside living at the time. Uh, was responsible for all of the garbage on the inside of the home, which now has made its way outside of the home.
Is that the same two that's still there now?
No.
Different, okay.
They're, they're not there now. The ones in rehab and the other one's been. On the street.
And so they're not really responsible for this, haven't done anything, but.
Again, Kiara is one of those lifelong. Uh, persons that have the rights to the home along with Ginger Nancy that has lifelong rights. Uh, Kiara and her baby daddy. Were a lot responsible for the accumulation of the trash inside and outside.
So does Mr. Marshall uh. Come down and he helps us? He's maybe the landlord?
Kevin Marshall is one of the property owners and he's the one that's gonna furnish the trailer.
Okay, I missed that.
And pay for the, the disposal of the debris. What I wanted to try to do is help Ms. Butler get the property cleaned up next door so she can have. A better quality of life, uh, living there next to it. Uh, one of the first things we had to do is deal with the drug activity that was there. Since the fire, uh, the two younger folks have moved out. Uh, now she's in rehab and he's like living with his mom or somewhere in Sklar. Uh, Ginger has been living in the home. Um. I think there are signs that she's trying to get on her feet, but. With any person that's addicted, it's. You know, I hope nothing but the best for her. And I think this is a. A hand up and not a handout for her. I'm hoping that this will work and we can make it a little bit better for her and hopefully for the town as well. What I hope is.
As the chief said, I think punitive matters at this point wouldn't be as effective. The concern here is to clean it up. And then just to reiterate what we talked about last month with the uh, um. The Greg Jenkins is that essentially be the same as when we have to plow snow for somebody, we plow the snow, we build them. And then you would put a lien, uh, which is also complicated because we don't have a written state tax, so. Um, that was our legal counsel's advice also that it comes. Uh, less effective than you would usually intend with these kind of uh. I don't know, abilities a town has to kind of uh, either clean up or tidy up a apartment of the town. So uh, just to break the chief's point on that, that. We were looking for something that would uh, effectively clean up the uh, historic district.
May I just add on to that, that we already spoke about, there is. A vacant area to the right of that property. Just before where the um, a little small cottage historic house is. That grass is thigh high and debris, tree branches, et cetera, no trash. But I believe I was told that there is some ordinance that the grass gets to be a certain height. That the town would mow it, take care of it and then build the property owners um, to be determined because that's still, I think, a bit of a. Mess on all of that, but if that could go forth, that would also. Dramatically improve the environment. I don't go down on that side very often. I stay. In my lane and on my side, I don't go there, but just can pass me by. You can see it from the street. Walking there, it's the grass is.
Let's get the uh, let's get the trash taken care of and keep an eye on that. Then when the springtime hits and still starts growing again, we'll uh. Address the vacant lot.
Let me, let me ask you a question of. Or propose something. It, it's a person, the tenant there, does, is there, does she have a, or he or she have a social worker? And the other question, the other uh, proposal I had is we, we have people in the area who were needy and. I, I, we could arrange to um, to have them get firewood and food. Uh, available from our food companies and uh. We could, I'd take care of that if they needed it, but I, but the social work I think is, is key, you know, she bought into uh. A proceeding help and, and trying to change her life around, you know, that kind of stuff.
Now, there have been a few people that have delivered firewood. I don't know them and I'm not familiar with the vehicles or not regulars. Um, so I somehow the word has gotten out and I don't know if the Marshall family may have instigated that or not, but. She has had a couple of deliveries, but here lately she's been burning furniture, foam mattresses, debris and again.
Food too.
Refuse.
A lot of medicine. She likes medicine.
It's, it's, it's uh, me being very close by, I, I don't even go outside because I worry for my health and safety.
If they need it, just let me know and I'll, I'll get a couple of bags over there.
So she has no cell phone. And she has no internet service. She's been going to the library to try to utilize their services. To get support for food and things like that. Who might I direct her?
You could direct her. I mean, we, we, we do deliveries twice a month and, and she'd be qualified easily. Yeah, and, and I have emergency food too. So, you know, if they needed it, I can bring it to more.
Okay.
You know.
To answering your question, I don't know if she has a social worker or not, but I know she is.
She's probably eligible for, she's probably eligible for SNAP too, you know, or, you know, some food assistance.
And we've been helping her at the police department as much as we've seen, so.
Well, let me know. I'll, I'll bring it over to you or her.
All right. Thank you for uh, coming before us. Let's see what happens on the twenty eighth.
Okay, you both, everybody.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Thank you, Chief. Okay, um, I don't have but a couple of things to add to what I said on last Monday and that is that we did have our. Chamber board. Meeting the following morning. We have some businesses, suppose we're getting some new businesses. So this is kind of exciting. Of course, we know about Scan purchasing the uh, or having, giving the building. Thank you, Tim. Uh, where the gift shop was and they have a, are having an open house this weekend. I think it's Saturday.
Saturday, I think four thirty.
At four thirty, if you're free to stop by and they'll tell you all about what they're gonna do and. Show you around the interior of that little building if you haven't been there before. Lula Bells has ceased operation down here, which uh, I never knew when she was open or not. But I saw. We understand there's a, going to be a fish cuddler going in there, seafood. Market, which will be interesting. Um. Of course, the uh, Bateau was sold. People that have purchased that, I don't know them, but they have applied for the business license. And where this, the uh, the uh, hunting and fishing uh, shop that closed down here, that's going to be like a gym. Exercise space of some type. Uh, so we, we lost three, we got three back real, real quickly.
We'll get more details on that. It was one of those, you know, on the sidewalk passing as somebody's carrying pile in. So they quickly tell you it's some kind of class.
So the other thing I was gonna mention is on Saturday, I joined a bunch of uh, folks from. Espot and some from Scottsville and we went to the multicultural center at Longwood University. And we met, had the pleasure of meeting a lady by the name of Cookie Scott. And Miss Scott was the first black student to be admitted to Longwood in nineteen sixty eight. And we had a nice discussion about race relations and Dr. King's birthday and then we went over to what had been. In the past, the uh. Black High School, which is right over by the baseball field there at Longwood with Brick Building. Um, it's a great museum now. And they uh, it was real interesting because uh. They had a student who led a strike. The building was designed for a hundred and eighty kids and they had four hundred, over four hundred students there and they would have to have. Three classes, three different classes going on at the same time in the little tiny auditorium, but. And this one student took it upon herself to organize a strike and they struck for ten days. And the police chief said, well, we're gonna arrest you all this true acts and she said, well, your jail won't hold all of us. It's too many. So anyhow, there, it was interesting because you think about integration and segregation. And their reason for striking was the separate but equal clause. All the white kids at Farmville High School were getting all the new stuff. And all the black kids were getting all the hand me downs and used books and buses that were so bad. One of them stalled on the train track and five. Children were died and when the train hit the bus. So they weren't interested in integrating. They were interested in, you know, why can't we have? Good stuff like the white kids had. They were fine with going to a black school, black teachers. They didn't, you know, had, didn't, didn't, if you get a chance, go to the, it's called the Moton, M O T O N museum in Farmville. It's right there at the intersection of uh. Uh, Griffin Avenue and Route fifteen Business and by the ball, Longwood's baseball field. And it's really worth the. Time to take the tour there. So we had a good, good time. Learned a lot of stuff. That's uh, only thing I need to add to my. Report from last week. Move on to the staff report.
Yeah, so I'll keep it short and just have two items. So. Uh, we already knew uh, farmer's market manager, Amory Morse. Um, she came into office today to do a little bit of onboarding. So um, it'll spend about the next month and a half before we do applications, working on uh. Getting yourself oriented, uh, introducing yourself to farmers. Um, and then um, we'll, I'll probably meet with her again later this year and see how we can. Um, address some of the concerns we've had before previously that were farmers market related, so social media contacts. Um, Jacob. Storage shift, um, the composition, definitely the composition of a farmer's market, so. And then in general, uh, being a little bit more communicative with our community, which seemed to be a major uh, concern in previous months. Uh, so um. We'll, we'll see her around at the very latest, uh, once we start a farmer's market season in Mar- uh, sorry, in April. Uh, and then the second one is I included the November financial statement. Uh, for town council. Some takeaways, our revenue slow, which is expected with. Uh, the winters, um, as you can see, we're a little bit slower on meal stacks uh, during the slow season. Um, we discussed this back in November with town council that uh, we were working on at the end of last year. On some uh, delinquencies, so those will start showing up in the December and the January. As we've had kind of success in the last six, seven weeks. With uh, compliance on that. And then um, our revenue slow also because we get a uh, large windfall. About a month and a half of business licenses starting in uh, March first and then uh, bank franchise that almost always comes down in May. Uh, but that becomes a good chunk of uh, that revenue. Other than that, uh. Uh, our expenses are looking on track. If we're off, we're off by about five percent, but. Uh, you want to catch that six months in so you can slow down on any unexpected and try to stay right on the button on that. So for example, uh. You know, by once if you expect about forty one percent of the expenses to be expended. By that time and we're floating from forty one to uh. Uh, forty seven, depending how much department it is. And then of course. Um, capital projects which we're gearing into are very low, but that'll change once we start uh. I start pulling back into cannot base and, and farmers market work. But other than that, I, what I would recommend is we'll. Look at a separate financial statement and then I'll try to do a summary in anticipation of that budget work, just to kind of give you a six month perspective. Um, and then we can kind of uh, uh. Look into what maybe next year would look like. If you know exactly how it is, please.
With the business licenses you were talking about. You said there was something with dilemma, uh, what? How many uh? How many delinquent? Count we have and how, how is the town going about to let the people know that we're doing business back from? We need to have. Business license.
About five to seven. Two of them are because uh. They have not communicated with us and they were new. Which I hope to be in compliance. The other ones are uh, frequent flyers who are often linked with us. Um, um. What we do is we're very clear starting this month because March first is when the cycle's over. The business license is when your New Year's due. About what those requirements are and then while we keep sending letters, uh, we usually start off with something softer. And then get into penalties, uh, and usually at that point. Uh, we'll have compliance, but we have people who are very persistent in uh, being delayed on and. Even in the face of penalties uh, sometimes. Uh, so. We'll, we usually get a wrapped up by the end of the year, especially those last, but I'd say most of the businesses understand that it's a responsibility. And uh, our. You know, it's only fair to everybody else, follow those kind of rules.
Thank you. Any questions for Javier? Very good, um. Any further comments from uh, other what we made last week from our committees of ARB, nothing new. I know we've had a planning commission meeting since we met last Monday, so maybe. Mr. Briscoe can update us on what's going on there.
Yeah, the main thing, Mr. Mayor, is that the comprehensive plan is continuing to be worked on. The. Committee is working on something I think we've talked about as a. Counsel, which is. This way to look at both goals and principles in terms of how. The comprehensive plan will be. Laid out and basically, the. Idea is they refer to it as weaving. So there's, for example, the, the goals of. Goal number one, build out infrastructure. Goal number two, provide housing. Goal number three, create community connections. Goal number four, demonstrate value and physical wellbeing. And then the principle on the other side is retain small town character. Principle number two, foster environmental stewardship and principle number three, enable growth. And the reason I mention it is that the. Commissioners are fine tuning the finishing of the document and it is basically presenting. The information in a way that takes the material that has been done over a long time period and presents it in this grid, the. Creation of this, as, as somebody who, who has a background in public administration, this actually I think is really helpful. When it gets to our stage, I think it'll be really helpful also for. The town. So my main report would be to say, this is, I think, an impressive way that it's being finished. Regrettably, it's taken a long time, but we're to the tail end.
Any questions for Mr. Briscoe? I noticed in the emails the other day that. Uh, Alamo County is still working on their plan and they have two or three more sections that there's. Haven't even touched yet.
That takes a long time.
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Highson, you got anything for us on any of your involvements?
Uh. I kind of went over it last year, a week, but I guess, I guess we're gonna be continually working on with government service. On the capital improvement plan and one of the things I guess we needed to add now is uh. Looking at the uh, pump house in the wall. Uh, we didn't have that in there, but we have a number of other projects for five years that. That can be considered. Um, we looked at the donation policy. I think we're looking at that still. And uh. That's about it with uh, government service with Parks and Rec. As I mentioned, uh. We're fine tuning it, uh, you got some maintenance, but it's, it's near completion with the, with the. What we wanted to do. Uh, we started this. Over this. committee was started this year about, about this time last year. And made a lot of progress. And uh we've come to a place where we can't do too much except um unless we have some excessively larger projects, unless we have um some money or some volunteers. We need uh roads, bathrooms, and a bridge, um which are gonna take, you know, major funding or volunteer work. So, and then we're also gonna be looking at the master plan and doing a revision of the master plan of uh what, 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 what we could do in the next uh five or ten years with that, or what we wanna do with it. But most of the sites have been ordered or put in place. And uh, you know, we got the picnic tables down and, you know, the maps and everything. So it's in good shape. And then we're also looking at the, starting to look at the Canal Basin Square. Uh and I think we, that's with the town, you know, some, is that we were asked to look at that a little bit. So there's some issues with Canal Basin Square, but so anyway, that, that's with the two committees that I'm on.
Yep. Any questions for Mr. Heisen? Man, you got everything or anything you wanna talk about?
No, no, I've been doing my listening job like, I want to ask Bill though, do we still have Warden Mount? A kiosk?
Yeah, a kiosk. We have still one kiosk and yeah, and what's in-
Is that all the grounds too and?
Yes, and what, and what, yeah, I should have mentioned that we've-
So it's been there like-
Right.
Three years?
Right. And what, we could ask Tim that, but one of the suggestions was to use that last kiosk at the end of the levee. Over there by the ball fields to put it there. And uh that, and, and have a, a smaller sign at the Canal Basin Square, both of them indicating that this is a levy walk. A, you know, that's, that the levy walk is due to Mayor Thacker and we're gonna recognize him on the levee or on the, on the sign at the Canal Basin Square. We haven't, we'd work with the museum on that. I talked to some of them about that, talked about that too. But that kiosk was, was originally for the wetland area, but you know, that's a long ways off. So we thought about using the kiosk at the uh, on the, on the levee if we could put it on the levee. So we haven't got permission from that yet. We have to find that out. But anyway, that's, that's the, but you're right, that, well, that kiosk was ordered before me, without approval, but uh it's still there. I don't know if it needs a seat, you know, it's got a lot of these, our fine kiosks become with seats and stuff like that, but you know, it'd be nice to have a little, little cabinet for maps.
Since taking the public and see it with this deteriorating, that's two bad things.
Yeah.
If that is happening.
Yeah.
Jim said to care of it, it's under a tarp, but it would be better to have it installed and rather.
Thank you.
All right, well, um, understanding that Mr. Townsend and Mr. Whitman do not have committee assignments yet. Uh I think that's something we need to discuss at our next February work session and then make any appointments we need to make in um the council meeting in February. So what I would ask everybody to do is if you're happy with what you're doing, let me know. And if you will need to make a change or wanna make a change, or you have a special interest, either one of uh our new members have that still we wanna get involved with. We'll, we'll talk about it and see what we can do about uh making any changes or keeping things the same. But we need to get, to get you two involved in, in something. And uh we just haven't had time. You're, you've only done our council two weeks, so.
I've looked at the list here and uh I've noticed that, I mean, that's often coming out on multiple, multiple committees or whatever. Is this the full list or are there things that are not listed?
No, that's the full list.
We'll get all that hammered out next month.
One, one thing just if I might add, Mr. Mayor, would also be at times uh committees might be stagnant, like nothing's happening with it. For example, government services have been something that not much had happened for a long time in the last year, couple of years. It's very active. Or that we have a newer committee that, that's been there, the preparedness committee. So sometimes the council might create a committee. Like the Parks Committee was created years ago and now it's a regular committee. So there, things can come and go. And it may be that the two of you have some idea that we should be doing that we haven't thought of before. So that's valuable. Or it may be that you look across the committees and think you really are interested in one. And so that's, it's helpful to think about.
Well, some of the committees are two uh, two council members.
You could have two.
The each committee or depending on the committee itself.
You could have two in, in any committee, but we usually have at least one. As a liaison. Connect with, but you could have two. We've had two before, but and you could be on more than one committee too.
Mayor, would you like to, while we're talking about two councilmen on a committee, to, I don't know if you guys are aware that we can't meet in groups larger than two? If we're talking about town business, if it's not official meeting.
Yeah, they have uh been duly trained.
All right.
Three council people can't get together and talk about anything. You can have a social event as long as you don't talk about it.
Well, or Mr. Mayor, we can, it, it can be another official meeting. It's at the point. It could be an official meeting that's declared some other time. Which can happen.
Anyhow, think about what you were interested in, let us know and be ready to uh get an assignment next month. A couple of other things I was just gonna uh mention here that uh I hadn't had a chance to yet. There is, uh we understand in the barber shop, uh vacant barber shop where Rodney was, there's going to be a buy appointment only firearms dealer there. So uh looking, looking to see what, how that works out.
Looking most, mostly online and he's signed up.
He has an online business now and he's looking for a brick and mortar uh building and he has selected that. So he plans to rent that and have like a shop, but uh not a, not a walk-in off-street shop, an appointment-only shop. Either next work session or March, uh Charlie Armstrong from Southern Development would like to come and give us an update on everything that's going on. Uh you know, it's uh like we said, when the new neighborhood was approved, it doesn't happen overnight. It's been about three years now and you should be ready to start building up there. As Stevie uh mentioned last week, when they were talking about the new uh scam space, we had the chamber meeting, the uh Stevie and Beth made uh their presentation to the chamber and uh we, we're pretty much gonna have one corner of that, uh one of those rooms as at visitor center brochures and, and things like that. So we talked about the comp plan, uh the chief didn't mention it, but the cameras that we were talking about that we got with the grant, they've been installed.
That's great. That's great, Mr. Mayor.
Javier's having a really rough time getting the power company to respond. And all we need is a meter on this charging station out here and we can start charging cars. But he's getting stonewalled everywhere he turns, so he's going directly to the top next and see what he can, he can do. That's the only thing holding us back. They just don't come down here and put a meter on. Yeah, the main thing I wanted to mention this evening is you got, I think everybody got the email. General Assembly's in session and there's two general assembly members who don't think meals taxes are good. Uh one of them wants to cap it, cap it at four percent. What is there, six and a half?
Yes, sir.
And uh, I mean, if you take two and a half percent of our meals tax income away, we're really gonna be hurt. So my suggestion is contact Amy Lauper. And uh contact anybody you know in the general assembly and explain to them in your own words that meals tax is what helps little towns like Scottsville survive. And if, if this happens and it, and hopefully it won't, but it should happen, so we're gonna have to start talking about real estate tax. And that's something I don't want. Because uh Alamo County is reassessing everybody again this year. Everybody's properties can go up again this year. Tax rate might stay about the same, but everybody, you know, if you get bumped up another twenty-five thousand dollars, that's uh you don't want another real estate tax on top of the real estate taxes. So anyhow. Let's get on into the organizational meeting. So that's something for the new members. We are due every year. And it's basically just confirming what we have, which are making any changes we need to. And the first item is establish dates and times for our meetings for the coming year. Uh currently, the second and third Mondays at seven o'clock, work session and, and council meeting. And I'm selfish about this, but this works best for me. But uh
We do, we do this every year that I've been here and it always ends up at the same time. I say we just keep it, it works.
Okay.
Well, it's uh, what, I like to know what you guys, uh your schedules. I, I mean, last year we talked about a different day, a different time and uh we've been keeping it Monday, but I personally prefer Tuesdays or Wednesdays at six. But uh, you know, I can, I'm flexible. I don't know how you guys are.
Walter works, you work in Charlottesville and, and you have, you know, if you don't get off to five, it's kinda hard to make six o'clock.
Actually luckily, when I do get off at three thirty, so I can meet in, that's about four. And I learned one of the committees and meet at three P M. So that's a no-no for me right there in the corner. Some of the committee meetings or whatever.
So you're pretty flexible.
I work in Richmond until, you know, I, I don't get home till about six o'clock so. So not every day, but okay. But Mondays are great, cause I work from home by day. So that's mine.
I would say since, let's keep it the same until, for next year anyhow, see what happens if there are next organizations. Do we need to vote on this?
Mr. Mayor, just a quick comment, just, that's all right, just to follow up with Alex, and just so you guys have this. We've, we have had a couple of long discussions over many weeks and months. And basically, we end up with Monday the same as we have. And so I was just gonna say, I totally agree. Let's keep it as it is. I also would find it very difficult if it was earlier than seven o'clock.
So somebody make a motion?
So moved. I move that we keep it as is.
Second. And, and discussion?
Well, the only thing is that I, I do think uh with the uh work session, you know, and just for the staff, you know, they're staying over two hours for all the time. And I'm, if, if we could, it might, you don't have to have the work session in the uh, the regular session at the same day and time. You know, you could have it at a different time. And so I, I think it's worth considering, but maybe, maybe we're not ready for that yet, but I do know that uh, then I've looked at some of the other counties and they have a, a day and work session at a different time than they have the regular session. So anyway, it's something to consider. It's seven o'clock is late for a lot of people.
But I, I think what we have determined is that seven o'clock is the best time for most, most everybody, because some of us don't get home till six o'clock or later.
And it's also not even, that's also the citizens who work and people are in other places and uh.
Okay, any further discussion?
I will say that um personally, I don't care. I'm flexible when it comes to evening meetings. And the committees I try to serve on, uh I had time conflicts, so I understand both sides. I'll, I'll just uh reiterate what I, I said a year or so ago, that the, the only advantage I see in moving it from Monday to another day, like Wednesday, um is because you don't have the holiday conflict.
Yeah.
Of course, we experienced that yesterday. We're none the better, none the worse for it. But uh, it, that's, that's the advantage. It may be an advantage to some people. Or, and of course, a disadvantage. But I will say, if meetings are moved to another day, you'll have less postponements and, and uh rescheduling regular meetings.
Okay, anyone else?
Alex Bessette?
Yes.
Dan Grisco?
Yes.
Bill Heisen?
No.
Edward Payne?
Yes.
Walter Townsend?
Yes.
Roger Whitley?
Yes.
This passes five to one.
Okay. The next item is the appointment of a vice mayor who's also the president of the town council. And he runs the show when the mayor can't be here. Um Mr. Payne has been our good vice mayor for the last year. And I personally uh think that he is, this is nothing against anybody on the council, but I think he's, he's qualified. And he is uh has more free time than some others. And uh like myself, he's five minutes away. And so uh I would like to see Mr. Payne be kept on. But we will open the pool for a nomination for a president of the council who serves as vice mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Mr. uh Council Payne.
We're moving to second. Any discussion?
Two, two comments I'd like to make. Number one, would you like to, question, would you like to continue serving?
It hasn't been a burden. This guy's always cramped. The one time I thought I would be acting instead, he, he, he didn't get to go on his vacation.
That's now scheduled for April, so you can have the whole.
I get blown up, but.
Yeah, you have to, you get to run both shows.
I didn't know he was in town for a week. I stayed close by.
In the hospital and then in recovery for a week, so not me and my wife.
Second point would be, if over the years, there's been some debate about is it the person who gets the most? But like, it's a little more complicated now that we're split the way we are in terms of how people run. But I would make the argument, having just run for mayor and you having a, a very significant amount of votes, I think you did get a lot of votes and you did have, you do have a lot of support out there. And I think it's wise for us to both affirm your experience and at the same time, even though that was a vote for mayor versus a vote for town council. It's the same, it's similar. People are supporting your service to the town. So I very much heartily recommend to be our vice mayor.
Well, I appreciate that. And if you all vote me in, I'll abstain, but I'll, I'll be glad to serve with the remainder of this term.
Okay, so any other comments and discussion? Call the roll.
Alex Bessette?
Yes.
Dan Grisco?
Yes.
Bill Heisen?
Yes.
Edward Payne?
Yes, same.
Walter Townsend?
Yes.
Roger Whitley?
Yes.
Five, two, one, abstaining.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we don't have to go through the bank and change all the signature tones.
I live close to the bank.
Uh just be careful crossing the street. Uh Tim didn't mention it, his, his sister in South Carolina, and I don't, and, and this is, this is not any secret. Over the weekend, her, her husband was struck and killed by a, a vehicle. When he left the place of business and crossed the street to get to do so. His truck and uh he, he I don't know the circumstances, but uh he did not survive initially. There have been not a lot of problems with, with, in, in the family with medical issues and things like that. Uh anyhow, um next on there is a, a written policy allowing for government participation of members by electronic communications. Me, and you wanna run up there real quick, Javier?
Yeah, so it's just a rewording of the original one that was done back in twenty-two. I was going over FOIA and conflict of interest requirements. So we had new council members on. It was clear that it was an oversight that it should be an annual process. But I advised that every year when you have your annual meeting, you just renew your uh online process. Really no different from the policy that initially was first uh approved when, going back to the paperwork, you have an online policy when we had COVID. And then there was an approved policy after we came out of the state of emergency. Um it's relatively boilerplate. I had Jim look over it. He actually recommended that one, cause it's a little bit more readable than the old version. Uh but you can review it and it's just a policy. Essentially, you're agreed to, this is how we would like to conduct meetings if we have a member who wants to participate for an upgrade.
I mean, you know, Javier, just, just to follow up though, when it was originally created, I, again, thank, thankfully, this is long since passed and hopefully they'll never be in need. But there's an aspect, I didn't realize this, as a town councillor, we actually were allowed, we could get vaccines, for example, during COVID earlier than other people, because we were in what's called the continuity of government. And it's, it might sound strange, but because of the role that we play representing and serving the council, there are aspects to this. Originally, that meant there was no other way for us to meet. So we met that way. And there could be a circumstance conceivably where that could happen again. So I, yes, at the moment, it's a choice that maybe somebody can do it. And it's a plus to have that opportunity. A plus to have that opportunity to be on. Versus, you know, on a visual, but there might be circumstances that where it's for, we, we have to do it that way because. You know, something happens that requires, uh, and so I just think we, it's. God forbid, but it's helpful to know. I mean, uh, the continuity of government is important and we. Um, I, wasn't it, am I incorrect in saying part of the reason it was corrected was for that?
Yeah, so I came in twenty two, so there, I think it was like the state emergency for like, you know, months, so I was really getting my. Heat wet or whatever. Um. But what I understood is we had an online policy initially because of state emergency. Let's say we read through the state emergency, they changed town, they changed state code, and at that point you had to put in a policy. That wasn't during a state emergency, it was just during. Regular operations at that point.
And there's, there are other, I mean, it could be a flood or a tornado, or there can be other things that could cause that, and so it's, it's important for us just to keep. I don't, it might be good to ask Mister Bowling if there's any. Imp- implication in terms of how that would be in that circumstance, or are we okay given what you're talking about?
Yeah, so for example, even allows for uh. A health issue in your family, not only yourself. Uh, personal uh, commitment issue, you still want to participate, you know, something got complicated at work. Um, but I'll, I'll follow up with Jim about that. Should function, mostly i- i- it will function effectively to have a member to uh, try to join remote because of some conflict. And being able to still uh, have voting or um, as a town council.
Does that make sense to you new guys? I mean, I just want to make sure because it, it, there's been value to it with the time somebody's been sick. Or, or Bill or Eddie or Alex, do you have any comments on it?
I was just gonna put a motion forward.
Okay.
Get the train moving.
Okay, so we need a motion to accept this.
All right, I move we adopt a written policy along for government to stay or governing participation of members by electronic communications.
Second, second, and any discussion on this one?
And this does not include voting, it's just. Oral part, participation.
Second.
It doesn't include voting.
It does.
It does.
Or does.
And that might need to be put in there specifically then.
No, it's clear, it's.
Is that in there? Okay.
Your forum. You're participating remotely.
Okay, one time, one time we did.
Yes.
Okay. But uh, when we end portion voting.
Uh, except for work session, of course.
Yeah. Okay. Any other discussion?
Alex Passat.
Yes.
Dan Gritsko.
Yes.
Bill Heisen. Edward Payne.
Yes.
Walter Townsend.
Yeah.
Roger Whitley.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Good. Okay, we already discussed the. We already discussed the cleanup of the local most of parcel. Uh, board is owning a field of vacancies, we have two vacancies and now we only have two candidates, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And they are.
Uh, Stuart Munson and Mister Meeks are, yeah, Mister Meeks.
Um.
We approve them.
We can approve them tonight.
Yeah.
I move to accept. These two candidates for the board is only.
I second.
Recommended to uh.
Right, recommended to the.
To recommend.
State. I second.
All right, the move is seconded, that we recommend Mister Meeks and Mister Munson to fill the two vacancies on the board is owning appeals.
Mister, Mister Mayor, I'd like to make one comment only, it is. I do want to apologize in the sense that. There, we've had some confusion through the process of this, and I do think that's. Regrettable in terms of there was another candidate who was in and was out and was a bit frustrated, yeah, people, so. That being said. That was not the intention of anybody in that process, it, the only. Thing that happens, and I will say back to the citizens of the town. Most of the time, we're always needing volunteers, so we need volunteers and so thank, thank you to these two gentlemen who will be. Joining at the same time, those of you who are out there, please. We have lots of openings and lots of communities and lots of places. Feel free to find your place, uh, we apologize for times where we don't get it right.
And any other discussion?
Well, no, I just. Think that Mister Meeks is definitely, because he's applied for some other positions and never really got a. You know, interest in the. But uh, the other thing is that I, I am concerned about uh, Mister Munson's uh. That he's not in town a lot, so I, that's only concern, but if, you know, I guess they don't meet that much and they don't do that much, but. You know, the fact that you're a part-time resident here. Uh, could affect. You know, the committee, you know, not being there, so.
They told me after their last trip that they uh, pretty much finished traveling.
Okay.
That's why he applied for it, because he's got a lot more.
Okay.
Local time than he is on the.
Well, that's good enough.
That, I'll just pass that along. So uh, any other discussion?
Alex Passat.
Yes.
Dan Gritsko.
Yes.
Bill Heisen.
Yes.
Edward Payne.
Yes.
Walter Townsend.
Yes.
Roger Whitley.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Can I roll and then make a motion about the resignation?
Next, I don't know this. Of the point, the appointment and resignation policy. Mr. Javier.
So as I stated in the staff report, the only change is a minor change included thirty day. Uh. Um. The thirty day initial uh, deadline of thirty days. After the initial announcement of resignation, uh, following the recommendation that I received last Monday. Uh, other than that, it's all the same.
I move we adopt this resignation clause.
Second.
Move to seconded, any discussion?
Well, the only thing I, I, I just thought, you know, about, like, what we just did, you know. That's a minor change, it would be review all applicants and set up an interview. And I would say if needed, like, if there's only one candidate. You know, I don't think there's any point in having an interview, but anyway, that would, I would just think that would be. You'd give us the leeway that we wouldn't have to have uh, the, that, you know, we could just select, like a lot of places, they just. Get an appointment and they just point them, and you don't have to go through the interview process, but you know, we know everybody in this town, so. Anyway, I just thought that might be, make it simplify things. And if you have five candidates, definitely you could do something like that, but with one. Or we have two, we didn't, you know, we didn't have interviews in that, of course, that's not required, but. Anyway, that was. My thought.
Okay, any other discussion? If you would like this version to include Mister Heisen's thoughts, then. Uh, Mister Passak can either change his motion or do we include that? Or we can. Not accept this one. And vote on it.
At least, which one, which one you say?
I'm fine with the current one.
Okay, so I, I continue to support that then.
Okay, and this, so this is what we're voting on?
Yeah.
Without the conclusion of what Mister Heisen said.
Uh, if anyone else like to voice agreement, I'm fine with it as it is if there's a. Other people that want to change it, I'm not dying on this hill, because I think we'll work that for a while, it's fine.
I'm up a little bit.
Okay, so, move to second and discuss the piece of paper we have in our hand will be the version that we use. Uh. Hold on.
Alex Passat.
Yes.
Dan Gritsko.
Yes.
Bill Heisen.
Yes.
Edward Payne.
Yes.
Walter Townsend.
Yeah.
Roger Whitley.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay, now we'll get to the one that uh, the policy on donations to nonprofits and organization.
Like we did the draft that uh, Mister Heisen, or the, yeah, the draft in Mister Heisen's shed last Monday, and the direction I would see from council was that uh. You would like to review it and then add a discussion on it.
Do we um. Options are to vote on this like it is. Or refer to our next work session, make any changes that anybody wants to make, and then we'll vote on it next month.
Are you happy with the move or the news?
I think the government service kind of, we could go back to them, but they, I think they've been working on this for many, many months uh. And suggestions, but I think uh. I mean, I hope that the whole idea is that if we're gonna give money. And I guess we don't have to do that, but if we do, we ought to be, make sure it's a. Fair, thoughtful and uh, inclusive. And this, I think, covers a lot of that, and it's the, you know, the right place, right types of organizations that are in town that we support. But I, I mean, I think it's been good. I think the only uh, question we might, I might have to decide today, but I've. Do you want an independent committee, you want the government service committee to do it, or do you want just the town council to do it? It uh, streamlines things or makes it easier if you have an outside body, and it's a little more objective, but. Um, if we think we can do this, um, I mean.
I would, I would. The only people that I would want make, I don't want to hear from the government service, I would only want the town council to, to be involved. And nothing, I, this, in other words, we don't do that much in terms of this right, right now, we, we only do a little bit of this and. I think government services or any council, any committee could make an opinion now and it's without it, but, but in terms of a process, I think it's, I think it's part of the budget.
Has it been done by the town council?
Yeah.
Yes. No issues with that then?
Uh, well, it wasn't true. There hasn't been a. I mean, we have been doing, done it a whole lot, but often on we've done it like we've given money to nonprofits. But we have, there hasn't been a real thorough, thoughtful pro- process sometimes.
Yeah.
And uh, this was uh.
Well, that's on our shoulders.
Yeah.
Money going to the hands of other committees or.
Yeah, I was looking at the log deck for the Virginia State side and, and you know, the open fair process, just like you were saying, Bill. It is, is um. Parallel.
Right.
And the type of organization that um, he, I was looking at, they could donate, the local government can donate it.
Yes.
So the town council should be able to, I mean, once it's.
Right.
Gone through the whole process of being advertised and, and put it straightforward, like you said.
Right.
A, a town council should be able to make that decision.
Yeah.
I would think if it's been done fast.
Right.
What about uh, what about extending the uh. It's dead for a minimum of two years, I mean, you know, something. What we've seen.
Yeah, that could be.
I mean, two years too short, should we extend that to three, maybe four, I mean. The law, the law of something been here, some noises over there.
Right.
So I mean, I, I, I mean, I don't have the offer on that.
That's a good idea, I just, that, that was so mentioned by, I, I met with Almar, and they've mentioned that, but. We don't have that many nonprofits, and in fact, one of the things would be to, to get a list of the, the front nonprofits that qualify in town. You know, like seeing the museum, the, the baseball, the, the Boys and Girls Club, the, the, the P T O. Which ones are, are, are available? Now, I guess we wouldn't use United Way or, you know, Goodwill or, you know, Salvation Army. But uh, it would be good to have a list of, that we could go through. And uh, and say, I think, these are the people that qualify.
Uh, the reading the state law is pretty clear, well, you know, I'm a lawyer, but it was pretty clear on what you could give to, and as long as it's a secular. Organization, you know, there can be a police management fund, there can be a volunteer fire department and. You know, it's those kind of things.
Right.
Uh, i- i- the list of what the, the local government can give to is, is pretty.
Right, I guess you could give to anybody, right, but.
A- as long as it meets those.
Right.
Organizational.
Right. Right, but I'm, I'm, my personal, my personal feeling is it should be. The Scottsville based, where Scottsville connected to somehow that would benefit our community.
And that's, that's my point, I, I'd like to bring up right now, in the second paragraph. Must be in operation for a minimum of two years, it doesn't say operation in Scottsville or Alamo. It just says an operation, I've been operation for seventy two years.
Again, the state law says that um, it, it, it's a, it has to show um. Benefit to the local government, so if it's not based in Scottsville, it would be hard to. You know, even if it's a great cause, the, the. Moon pantry, Shenandoah Valley would not.
Right, right.
Your city.
So some things are, are benefit in Scottsville, but do not, are not based in Scottsville. For example, even the Boys and Girls Club, that's, that's Alamo County. But it benefits Scottsville, but.
It has a presence.
And so, you know, Meals and Wheels might be uh, something that's. From Charlotteville, but it benefits some people in Scottsvilles. So anyway, that's a, a tough, but that's a good issue, I mean, I, I don't know what the answer is for that.
So I tend to not like, and I think if Jim was here, he'd probably agree with me, adding stipulations to things that council can and can't do. This money is at our discretion currently to give away, if we want to give it away. Adding things like two years. To me. Seemingly it's time to hang for no. Whatever great nonprofit comes into town, but we want to help them out what we can, because they haven't been here for two years. So just my two cents on that, I think uh. It should be as open-ended, but you know. Get the point across, what we want to do with this document, but not firing into the less far.
Yeah, usually so- somebody after two years is pretty well established, you know. Um.
So do we want to come back with this next month? Yeah, those are what their agenda calls for is just a discussion, not really a voting on this thing.
I think that's wise, Mister Mayor. You know, just looking at one.
Your committees came out, start with.
We can go back to that.
Take the comments.
I, I'd have to get those comments, but uh, see if they want to, but. The, the other, not comment, but the other thing is uh. Uh. This is built into the, from what I understand, this is built into the budget, right? So this, this is, would be to take it out entirely would, would require a, another. Thing, but so this is basically about who to give it to, but not taking it out.
This is like, you have an appropriation question, which is what you're asking, what our budget looks like.
Right.
And then to Alex's point, what you're establishing here is a policy as council members. About how you would move through this process, the same as the resignation policy.
Okay.
Uh, it's just how will.
Yeah, I could, I could bring it back to them, see if they have any, any uh, other questions or.
You all have any um. If you have any comments or suggestions for government services, let it, let them know. And we'll talk about it more at the work session. Uh. In February, then hopefully we can have something for the council meeting in February that we can vote on. A R M E approval of the water line easement, like Javier, would you explain that?
Yeah, so um. I'll just, just gonna read off my staff report, so what's attached is the deed of easement. And the easement plaque. For town council approval for the water line easement for parcel IDs one thirty eight seventy five A. Um, so. Prior uh, late, late last fall, the service authority and then. Um, also Ravenna Sewell Waste Authority. Did two separate presentations to town council explaining the phase four. Uh, water, wa- water line project down here, essentially the same thing that they did a few years ago over at Croze and other areas in the county. They're just monitoring our water lines down here. Part of that um, which now got delayed another year from last time, so we're looking at twenty six, twenty seven. Um, they would require an easement from us. Um, one thirty A seventy five A is essentially the tennis courts, the gazebo and the parking lot. Um, it's just split into two, Doyer Park on our parcel IDs. What I attached and I wanted to clarify for you was a switch up in our staff report last month, I included a different project, which is the backup generators easement plaque. But both of these are matching correct now. Um, if you look at the plaque, as I stated. Um, it cuts right through uh, essentially the parking lot, and they're just trying to uh. Have a uh, thirty foot uh, easement there to do their own water line work. Um, it goes perpendicular from Page to Harrison Street, goes south of the tennis courts. South of the bathrooms and then right north of that tree line and that gazebo, literally that parking lot. Um, so I. Double checked everything with Jim Bowling last week after our, our work session, and then spoke with engineers also. Uh, to make sure I have all my ducks in the road, what I might advise is just as part of the continuance and um. Getting some of the. Legal paperwork with easements out of the way, um, that council would move forward with this, and then I'll follow up next month. With the uh, generator uh, project. There might be one other easement out there, but um, it seems to think every month, kind of some of the dynamics change with that. Um, within that, this is just a parcel. That we have an agreement with the Doyers that. We have possession of parcel, so long as we uh, um, maintain it and, and use Alamo as a support for the parks. Uh, legally, um, it's a boilerplate easement. Uh, for council.
Do you know when they're gonna do it?
Uh, first, it's the twenty six, when we did the initial presentation, and then they've been telling me to delay it again.
Okay.
Um, I would bet money on it.
But, but it wouldn't affect the, the tennis courts or the uh, the soccer or the playground?
No, no, I mean, well, the building on easement, but. No, no, I mean, well, they'll, they'll build the on easement, but they won't cut it in that respect, you'll still have people out there picking up at some point. So we'll comp it, park the lot for a moment.
Any other questions for Javier?
They, they checked in with the county, county had the same question, of course.
Motion to, uh, grant the easement.
I motion to grant the easement.
Back to the park.
Give it to me first.
Any further discussion?
Give, give, give Alex a break.
Thanks.
No further discussion, we'll call for the vote.
Alex Passat?
Yes.
Dan Gritzko?
Yes.
Bill Heisen?
Yes.
Edward Payne?
Yes.
Walter Townsend?
Yeah.
Roger Whitley?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
I had, uh, one other, other thing I needed to mention, um, February fourth at four o'clock.
Five.
Five o'clock.
Yeah.
Uh, Ted Coach from the Historical Society will be here because they have determined they don't have enough money, uh, to keep Hatton Ferry running. And so Hatton Ferry is going out of service permanently and he's going to. Have a public, uh, meeting in our chamber here, uh, which of course everyone is invited to, so he can express to the public, uh, their. Their desire to keep the ferry running, but their inability to do so.
And this would need.
Because of funding?
How much money?
I don't know, see, I was, we, we went there when that guy made a hundred thousand dollars, keep it running, and that was what, three years ago?
I think the river's been too low for him to run for the last three years.
Yeah, you're right.
Anyhow, I don't know, I'm guessing.
It's a shame.
Yeah, it's, the shame was for the, people who don't know, when the highway department ran it, it didn't seem to be a problem.
Wonderful.
Uh, Harold and Steven and others took care of seeing it keep operating and then went into disrepair and then. This family gave twenty-five thousand to get it fixed and when they got it back in the water, they gave another hundred thousand to. Make it run, so. Any other business? Thank you, everybody. Look forward to a big year, everybody working together and, uh, motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor?
All right.
Thank you, thank you all. Uh, this trip is rescheduled, I'm gonna be gone.